Well, on behalf of AAUW, the American Association of University Women, and AFW, the Women's Club of Lake Wells, I'd like to welcome you all to the 2022 City Candidates Forum. Both organizations are non-profit, nonpartisan, without religious affiliation groups. So we do not take a position on candidates for election. But we want it to fund this social forum as a public service for all of the various citizens. So we hope that you'll get a lot of your questions answered and that you'll know much more about our candidates by the time you get your vote. Tonight, Shani Bennett will be our timekeeper, she's a member of AAUW. And Jessica Bray will be our moderator, she's a member of both organizations. I'm co-president of AAUW, president of the Women's Club. I welcome you to our beautiful retirement building. And I turn this over to Jessica Bray. Thank you, Juanita. I'm going to go over what the protocol format will be today. It's actually printed on the papers that were on UAM. But let me do this quickly. The candidates are all going to give their opening remarks. They do have three minutes for that. Once they're done, they have five questions that we provide to them ahead of time. So you've got time to prepare. And they will each answer all five, one minute answer each. So it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. We should keep that that way, but they'll do it, I'm sure. As Juanita told you, our timekeeper, Shani Bennett of AAUW. She has the cards that would indicate when there's 15 seconds left on anything. And she has the final one. And a bell, which we hope, I'm sure, will ring. Probably for our public questions, not our candidates, because they're all very well behaved. Respect me, Shani, you're all good. So we've got everybody seated authentically. I'll get the three mayoral candidates together. And we will start right away with Curtis to do his opening remark.
Check one. Okay, deal. First, I want to thank the American Association of University Women and the Women's Club of Lake Wells for hosting tonight's forum. Also, I want to acknowledge my wife. She's running for Lake, but she'll be here. But she's my biggest supporter, my cheerleader, and my everything, Danielle Gibson. I'm happy to see all the candidates here tonight. My name is Curtis Gibson. I'm ready to be your advocate. I'm ready to be your champion. I'm ready to be your next mayor of Lake Wells. Experience counts. I have served four years as a city commissioner and two years serving on city boards. I am ready to put my experience to work for you in the city we love on day one. Over the next three years, I will be a watchdog over the city budget and our city finances. And we'll continue to reduce city taxes while making smart investments to better our city. Our city is growing fast. Our work is to maintain our friendly, small-town quality of life while avoiding the urban sprawl that new business and increased traffic often creates. As your commissioner, I showed up for you, supporting our firefighters and law enforcement officers while voting to implement police body cameras to increase accountability and protecting both the public and our police officers. I will support increased measures that would further build trust in our community. I supported the downtown and the northwest redevelopment initiative, which is the Dover Cove Plan, the Lake Wells Connected Plan. We have finished that together, and I will not stop without your help. As your commissioner, we pushed for a full-time recreation coordinator, purchased the family YMCA so that all Lake Wells residents will have access to a pool, swim lessons, and half-off discounts on membership. Together, we supported affordable housing to rebuild the northwest community. But we've got more work to do. I lived in public housing and understood the struggles in between. But like in life, I kept fighting, eventually becoming a college graduate, an insurance adjuster, city commissioner, and now possibly your next mayor at the age of 37. I will continue to mentor our young people, encouraging them to keep fighting for their lives they deserve, no matter how many times they may fall down. My priorities, and will always be, my faith, my beautiful wife Danielle, our children, and our wonderful Lake Wells. Reach out to me on social media at Curtis Gibson LW. I humbly ask for your trust, your prayers, and your vote. I promise to continue to ask tough questions, demanding transparency, getting results, and showing up for you. It is up to us to leave Lake Wells better and more beautiful because we live in it, and what a great legacy the Bock family left us in that call to action. I am ready to put my experience to work for you, and I will be honored to earn your vote on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis.
Okay, I did write this out because asking a preacher to say anything in three minutes will as two children people of faith, so why? Our charter does say that the mission of the city of Lake Wells is to serve and unify its citizens to foster economic growth while maintaining our city's small-town values. And I think that last part of the line is why I'm running for mayor. Lake Wells is a wonderful small town, and it's confronted with the challenge of remaining a wonderful town that's not so small anymore. And that really is the challenge. You can look at the platform of every person that's running for office up here, and they're pretty much the same because the challenges are pretty obvious. Any of you could have written these platforms. But everything really is secondary to the challenge that we're facing with growth. The world's coming to Florida. A large portion of it is shown here in Lake Wells. Some people call that migration, but for those of us who have been here for a while, it feels more like an invasion sometimes. And we see this growth sweeping away the groves, the vistas that we've grown used to, the wonderful orange blossoms, and most importantly, the memories and the values that we have here. So this growth, we know, is inevitable. But we really are facing the issue of who's going to control it. That's the big issue. And I think the answer to that concern is local leadership. That's why I think I can help our city cross over from anxiety to optimism in the face of this growth. This is my town. I've lived here for 30 years. I raised my kids here. I've led my congregation in this town to clean the streets, paint the buildings, landscape the parks, get to the schools, feed the children, serve the institutions. The congregation out of state has given thousands of dollars to the city, invested thousands of volunteer hours here. We've twice been proclaimed by the city for the savings that we've brought because of our service. We just executed a wonderful win-win transition with real estate that left the city with a great school for special needs children in our old facilities while we relocated. And I think that I share the same small-town values that we all desperately hope to maintain. Lake Wells needs to have competence and leaders in our midst. I think that we prone addicted to resumes and suspicious of the capabilities of the people that live right here in our community. And if we continue to look outside at distant experts or recent arrivals, we're going to surrender these values that we think are important to whatever they tell us those values should be. I'm local, and I'm a leader. And a lot of people talk about experience, but experience is just a word we use to describe whatever we've been through. We've all had experiences. But I've led a growing unified congregation here to invest millions of dollars with nothing but shared values and visions as leverage. And I have faith in the people of this community. And I think we can keep it a great community. And I think leadership is the key. And I'm willing to give it a try if you'll let me do that.
Cameron?
Hi, everyone. We've got a full house tonight. This is amazing. I want to thank all of you for coming out because it shows your investment and how much you care about Lake Wells. Also, I want to thank AAUW and the Lake Wells Women's Club for hosting this to give the citizens an opportunity to learn more about each candidate. A little bit of personal information about me. My husband, Stephen, and I have been married for over 30 years, and we have two daughters. We chose to move to Lake Wells because of the family connections, the small-town feel, community feel, and also the potential that Lake Wells provides. I have a bachelor of business degree from Georgia State University, and I'm currently enrolled for a certificate to master's program for public administration. My professional career spans over 20 years. And part of my job is to ensure that entities are financially stable but also sustainable. Also, a lot of leadership in creating vision, making sure that you have teams that understand that vision and empowering them to success. It's also about creating partnerships to ensure the foundation for success and communicating with individuals to understand the vision that we have going forward. A lot of people have asked me why I'm running for Lake Wells, and I find the answer would be very easy. This is an amazing community, and it has a lot of potential. But we are, as everyone has said, facing unprecedented growth. And those come with challenges, but also seeds of division. And if our community is divided, we will not be able to make change and make Lake Wells a better place to live. As mayor, I can help with that. Throughout this forum, you'll hear me talk about four pillars of my platform. One of them will be strategic development growth so that the city can grow but remain the city we love. Also, the finances, to make sure that we are financially stable now and sustainable for the future. And when I talk about the future, I also want to talk about conservation, my third point. The habits and the initiatives we change and implement today will leave this world, this community, a better place for the next generation. And last pillar, I want to instill the trust and transparency in our local government. A lot of people, those terms are thrown around a lot during political campaigns. But I invite each of you to hold me accountable. As your mayor, we can go on this journey together and make Lake Wells a better place for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Danny Preaker. I'm running for seat number four on the Lake Wells City Commission. I'm going to tell you a little bit about my background because most of you don't know me. I grew up on a dairy farm in northeastern Wisconsin. So by way of saying that, I'm no stranger to hard work. I was the first person in my family to receive a college education. I retired from sales management from a company in Birmingham, Alabama, about 10 years ago. I moved to Florida with my wife about eight years ago and into Lake Wells about five years ago. And we have been so happy since we have been here. Not once, not once, have I taken my snow blower out of my garage since we've been here. On my business card, it says that I am a Christian conservative constitutional patriot. Well, it doesn't say all of that because patriot wouldn't fit in the business card template. But the other ones are there. So I'm going to tell you about my principles and a little bit about my values. As a Christian, I'm very active in church. I lead a workshop entitled Friendship Witnessing, subtitled How to Tell a Friend About Jesus. As far as I'm concerned, there's only two kinds of people in the world, sinners that are saved and sinners that are not saved. And one of my major responsibilities is to move as many people as I can from group two into group one. I also sing a gospel quartet. As a conservative, I believe in the Constitution and the rule of law for everyone, no exceptions. I believe in the sanctity of life. I believe that we should have a limited power of government. The government that is powerful enough and big enough to give you everything you want is also big enough and powerful enough to take everything you have. I also believe in personal responsibility. According to, I think it's First Levitoniens maybe, those who would not work should not eat. Doesn't say cannot work. It says would not work. They should not eat. So that's kind of my conservative background. As a constitutionalist, we live in a democratic republic. We do not live in a democracy. A democracy is two wolves and a sheep trying to decide what to have for lunch. So we are governed by rules of law. Okay, I'm going to rush this a little bit. What will I do once I'm elected to the city commission? Number one, I'm going to be very careful about watching how your tax dollars are spent. I'm going to be a good steward of the money that we have to work with in Lake Wells. I'm going to look for things that are needed as opposed to things that are nice to have.
Hello, everybody. My name is James Lloyd. I'm running for city commission, seat four. And the reason I'm here, many reasons why I'm here, but I guess I'll try to make it easy. The first reason is because there's a situation coming up and people didn't have a choice. So I was approached about giving people a choice. I thought about it. I tried to run from it. I wanted to run from it. But then I had to think, if I didn't give people a choice, how could I complain? So the real reason I'm here is so that people have a choice. Now, some other circumstances took place that kind of changed the person I was running against. However, I hope that works out for him. That's the reason why I'm here. So now let me tell you who I am. My name is James Lloyd. I'm from Lake Wells. I'm from here. I've lived in Lake Wells all of my life. I love this city. I love everything about this city. But my focus has now changed from just wanting to give people a choice to actually making a real difference. And once I began this process, I began to have a better understanding of how I could actually be a part of that change. And also, an opportunity to kind of make a connection from the senior generation to the younger generation so I can understand how to pass the torch to the next generation. I think that's what it's about here in Lake Wells. I think we have something very unique here in Lake Wells. Last week, I read about it. I spoke with the police chief and the fire chief. And as I'm talking to him, I'm realizing that I remember these guys from growing up. And there was a look in their face that said, "Man, we could do this." That's how I felt about the way they were looking at me. And I mentioned some things about, you know, the recreation and what we could possibly do in Lake Wells and some of the things that we could kind of establish for the youth and also for the seniors. And there was a belief, there was a feeling that there's a real possibility that Lake Wells can really do something spectacular. Not just move forward and, you know, control, control growth, but I mean, kind of put Lake Wells on the map and establish Lake Wells as something special. We're here at the Crossroads of Highway 60 and Highway 27. And at one time or another, that was like the main rock. You had to come through Lake Wells if you came to Florida. It's going to be that again. So now when they come through Lake Wells, it's going to make people proud of what they saw when they left Lake Wells. This garden we're going to grow and build is going to be amazing. And I just can't wait to be a part of it.
Okay, we're going to go on to the prepared questions. Curtis, we're going to start with you. Your first, I guess. Okay. The city at this time appears to be focused on economic growth. What areas of endeavor, Andy, do you think are currently being neglected?
Well, with so much emphasis placed on future plans and growth, we must remember to care for the beautiful and historic city we have today, making sure we focusing on all of Lake Wells, not just downtown. Positive growth expands our tax base and brings in new business. But it must be well-planned, reasonable, and reflects the culture and history of our community.
I struggle with this question for a couple of reasons. Now? Technology, I wasn't warned. Struggle a little with this question for a couple of reasons. I think the perception is slightly incorrect and the presupposition behind it is a misunderstanding. It's a misunderstanding a little of the role of the city commission in that we don't focus directly on economic growth. We've got Main Street, and we've got the EDC and the Chamber for that. And we partner closely with them, and they're doing a fantastic job. But our role is to foster an environment of economic growth. And I was just at a great workshop that Main Street put on today that had this line, "Economic growth is largely about creating places people want to be." And we're already working on that. And also, I think it's a misperception that we're neglecting things that are important in the city. All of these systems that are important, I think we're paying attention to them and doing a very good job at that right now.
Thank you.
I think the city's doing very well in focusing on the economic strategy that includes the infrastructure, the additional staff and services that will come with this growth. But I think equal emphasis also needs to be placed on attracting industries here that are headquartered here so that the profits return. I think also be mindful of livability and affordability and also following the Disney model so that when you... Three points. We're welcoming visitors into the community. You're providing attractions for them, and you're leaving them with a memory. They will stay longer, spend more, and return more often. And that economic growth will benefit all of our community.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that we as commissioners can do is try to set the example. If we buy local and we encourage the rest of our commissioners to look at our expenditures and whenever possible, buy local, that's got to help the local community. In this election that we're going through, there are only two candidates who have spent all of their campaign money in Lake Wells, that's Jack Hilligas and myself. The combined total of the other candidates who were spent outside of Lake Wells versus Venice, California, Massachusetts, Orlando, is a little over $4,000. So I think we need to start by setting the example of the commission.
Question about neglect. Well, being that I'll be the new guy on the team, I don't want to start any issues with the guys that started there. So I will say this. I have spoken with people in the northwest section. And there is a feeling that, you know, they would like to see more done in that area. And my thing would be to that would be, like with anything, when anything comes out, you have a group of people that understand what's going on. And you also have people that don't really know what's going on. So at some point, maybe the city can re-involve those people in another discussion and to better understand and clarify what are the things that are possible and which ways we could continue to build the city and everyone feel as if they're getting their fair share, fair share and their fair input.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we're going to start with Rebecca. We're going to rotate this side. We did this a few years ago with seven people on the panel. And we always start with the first person. By the time it got to the end, we're like, "Yeah, what he said, that's it." We're trying to get them to answer that. Okay. Your question is, "What can the commission do to help improve the welcoming aspect and livability of our community?"
Simplan, or the Simplan for the Lake Wells Connected Plan. I think it's a wonderful plan. It came together as a cumulative process over a long time with input from a large cross-section of our community. And I can distinct from that, but part of it is trying to get investors incentivized to come downtown, fill in some of our empty spaces, invest in some of our historic structures that are there. The city has initiated a Parks and Recreation Survey, and they're acting on those findings. Make sure that our emergency services are up to par and make sure that the infrastructure that needs to be there is in place, especially in regards to utilities and things like internet, stuff like that. I think we also need to beautify the entrances to our city.
Thank you. And if any of you, any of the candidates want me to repeat the question, just ask.
Going back to the Disney model I said earlier, where you have the welcoming, you emphasize the activities and the attractions that are there, and then you also create a memory. When you're looking at the livability of a community, there's five different points that you rate a community on. The first one is affordability, a resilient local economy. And that is great for the entire community. Sustainable mobility, that means different ways to get around the town, but also being able to work remotely here. So that's where your Wi-Fi and internet comes into play. A diverse and vibrant public spaces where people can meet, greet, exercise, and enjoy their family. And I think, again, earlier today, we all heard that, you know, people that come into the community will stay longer and...
I think it starts a little bit more simple than that if we just clean things up a little bit. As I drive around Lake Wells, which we bill ourselves as the Gem of the Ridge, it seems to me that there are some places that need to be polished up a little bit. And I'm not saying that's something that the commission has to do. It's something that the citizens can do. If you're living next to a vacant lot that is getting kind of messy, get your dures together and clean it up a little bit. We do the roads out at Lake Ashton. And we picked up like 18 bags of garbage last weekend. So it can be done locally with the people. Doesn't have to be any kind of special program to get it done.
Livability of the city. I take to invest in the safety and the health of the community by also encouraging our business community to invest in our nonprofits and as a way of continuing to invest in our youth and the rest of the people who's involved in the community. I think by doing... Uh-oh, let me get lost, let me get stuck. But anyway.
All right, my next question.
Yeah, I went first, now I'm going last. Beautifying the entrances to town and exploring options to contract with the Florida Department of Transportation to Edge, Moe, TRIM, and plan city entrances at 27, 60, and Senate Highway. Showing that local control produces better results. Also, we can increase coal compliance, which will help remove litter in lighted areas. Working with both the police and the organizations like Keep Pope County Beautiful will not only allow for the intersection of public and private efforts to keep our city beautiful, but for our community to come together for one another, showing we are one Lake Wells with one shared future. And also, I would like to invite you Saturday at 19:00. If you'd like to come and help, we will be cleaning up road mirrors. So at 9:00 to 10:30, if you want to help my team, we're doing a cleanup... Oh, I'm sorry. Stop.
Okay, now to Cameron. With the recent approval for construction of 10,000 new housing units, what is your opinion of the city's current impact fee structure and expansion plans for schools, public facilities, and physical infrastructures?
The current impact fees have recently been raised to account for the growth that is coming our way, and they will continue to be reviewed. If you look at, even with the revised new rate, we're still lower than our surrounding counties around us. Today, we learned that the impact fees are not necessarily going to deter investors or development into the community. It is the livability of a community. And that's where the impact fees are helpful because it allows the developers to pay for it instead of the citizens here.
The impact fees, if you don't know exactly what they are, they're fees that the builder pays before they can put up a house, any place. Currently, those fees are about $9,060 per unit. So with 6,100 units so far approved on the way to 10,000, do the math. That's a lot of money. The city planner, the city manager, the finance director of the city, they've all looked at this from a 20- to 30-year standpoint. And what they're saying is, for now, we're good. We, as a commission, have time to make some changes if we need to. We do a new budget every year. There's going to be building continuing for the next, who knows how long. But we expect to double our population in about eight to 10 years. And with the impact fees that we have, all of those infrastructure things are well-covered. Should I say impact? Well...
It says, "With the recent approval for construction of 10,000 new housing units, what is your opinion of the city's current impact fee structure and expansion plans for schools, public facilities, and physical infrastructure?"
Basically, when it comes down to infrastructure, the city is in that planning phase now, but they're doing a survey. It's being done to determine how we should continue to build in the future. So I think that's going to be a big determining factor. Once they get that information back, we can kind of plan around that information that we received. Ideally, I would imagine we want to keep building, anything we're doing, close knit. Keep it defined and...
People having to travel all around and keep paying taxes in one area, you have the school, you have the housing, you have the shopping, you have everything in one area, you can reduce the impact on the environment by also continuing to develop and grow your infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as mayor, I would be happy to advocate for across the governmental entities, bringing all parties at the table in partnership. The city needs to require that developers bear the full cause of bringing sewer, water, and other amenities to their property. They need to buy into our city, it should not always be the other way around. I oppose expanding the use of septic tanks. Mr. Hilligas, he approved that, which can cause environmental problems. And if developers cannot afford quality enhancements, they should either not develop or reduce the scale of their project. That is how we create an environment for our city to thrive with, while holding business interest to account.
Thank you. Reverend Jeff?
I think that when you're, you're, one of the things I would say is, we need to pump the brakes just a bit, sometimes be a little bit more careful. I've seen headlines warning us of traffic getting and things like that, and just understand that when you see all these approvals coming, they don't happen overnight, and I think some of the numbers are a little inflated. It takes time for these things to happen. Now, having said that, just like what's been shared up here, our impact fees are pretty well in line with what's happening around us, they're recalibrated on a regular basis. And when it comes to infrastructure, we don't have complete control over all of that, the state and the county has to deal with some of that. When it comes to schools, there are concurrency studies are done when these developments are proposed, and Polk County speaks into that more than the city does. We certainly have to look at that, but you have to know that that, a lot of that's not under local control. And, and when it comes to annexation, and even the issue that Mr. Gibson spoke about, it's about who's in charge of those situations. Septic has existed out there for quite a while. I didn't bring that scourge on the city of Lake Wales.
Okay, there's question four, and we're going to start with Danny on this one. Okay, here's your question, Dan. Is there anything that we propose to change about the processes of our city government or about the way we do government?
One thing I would like to see is more people involved in the city government. I attend the, the Lake Wales City Commission meetings, and for the most part, there might be 15 or 20 people there. Quite a few are there for the awards that they do at the beginning of the meeting, and then they leave, and there's about half a dozen of us left. So if, if we get a lot more people involved, we'll know a lot more about what the people want, and that's the important thing. The groups that I spoke to have told them, if you can't make it to the city commission meetings, call me up, and I'll come to you, and you tell me what's on your mind, and I'll take it back to the commission.
Well, I believe the way the city is, is set up is, is fine because you have the citizens, the citizens elect the commission, the manager manages the city, the commission, they decide what the policy is going to be, the city manager, he carries out that policy. If there's an issue, the commission can deal with the city manager. If the city, if the commission makes a mistake, then the citizens deal with the commission. I think that's a fast setup.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Curtis? Is there anything that we propose to change about the processes of our city government or about the way we do?
We need to implement progressive pay raise system that recognize the hard work of those on the front lines of our city. On the commission, I advocated for higher pay percentage raises for our working-class employees. Otherwise, we will continue to see turnover and good people leave public service. Public service is not a public charity, nor should it be a vehicle to public celebrity. It is, it is my commitment that I will show up for you and do the work. I will continue to reduce the city taxes, ask tough questions, and be a watchdog over the city expenditures, just as I had as your city commissioner.
Thank you, Curtis. Reverend Jeff, it's your turn.
We're talking about processes, right, not policy. Processes now. Frankly, I think that the policy governance form that we have here in Lake Wales works very well, and it's efficient for a city our size. The charter is well-written, and so any change to our processes would require some sort of charter amendment, so I think it works very well for the city of Lake Wales. One thing I think we might consider, and this would be a charter issue, is just maybe reviewing the criteria of people that are allowed to vote in city electoral elections and expand that out to some, like, right now, the, the city's controlled by a pretty small amount of the population of people that actually consider Lake Wales their home, and I think that that's something we should look at.
Okay, thank you. Kenny?
I think the city's doing very well currently, and, and we will continue to improve as the need arises. But I would like everybody to take a look around. This house, I mean, this room is full of concerned citizens, and typically, we have boards that are difficult to fill, volunteer positions, and also have little or no ability to make change. So I think engaging and being involved will make it go a long way to improving the city. We have recently hired a communications and marketing manager with the city that is going to provide more information to our citizens and also market our city as the assets that we have that are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last question, and this will be going to Jen. A recent change in the Lake Wales Comprehensive Plans read, "The city shall consider developing a sustainability plan that addresses climate change." How do you think this should be done?
I think there's several ways we can do it. The first thing we can do is by encouraging the electric vehicles, by encouraging the city over time to transfer over to electric vehicles. Then we can also, if there's a way, I have to learn more, but there's a way that we can incentivize to developers that encourage use of solar panels, and then we can do to lower our impact on the environment, I think we should try to do that.
Okay, thank you. Next, it'd be Curtis.
I agree. Inviting businesses and developers to invest in solar electric charging stations is one way we can address our city's energy needs with long-term sustainability in mind. Companies like Duke Energy are ready to partner with the city on projects like solar farms. I would explore any option, including state and federal grants that would allow our city to provide cleaner and more affordable energy to our citizens. If we invest today, we will save tomorrow.
Thank you. Reverend Jeff?
So the question is, how do we, how would we develop a sustainability plan? And I think we would approach that the same way we've done other things in the city, it's been very effective. We would engage the citizens in a cross-section in the process, get input from them. That's how you develop, I think you develop a plan when you're in a city, but the things that would interest me is we have to look at alternative water sources, that's going to be a big strain on our city in the future. We're already doing some good proactive things on the city commission when it comes to that. We have to look at energy conserving options. I know that Duke has retrofitted a lot of our lights to make them more efficient. Plant and cultivate, that's simple but effective, and that's another reason why I'd like the Lake Wales Connected Plan, because it's a city in a garden. And, and last thing, I think increase mass transit, start getting more involved in that, increase the walkability, all of that's downtown. One more thing, given the options about electric cars, that's all fine, but you've got to, you've got to be careful and slow-walk that, you've got to consider the socioeconomic level of the people that call Lake Wales home, or you're tone-deaf with that.
Thank you. Kenny?
Thank you. I think I would borrow the model that WWF, a conservation organization, uses, because there are plenty of initiatives that we can implement. But what we want to do is to look at the, the impact that each initiative would create, and also the feasibility. And when you're looking at feasibility, you're looking at things like cost, you're looking at the time to implement, you're looking at, is it politically or culturally acceptable to implement? And so to give you a quick example before I run out of time, if you think of two initiatives like planting trees or replacing the city fleet with electric vehicles, trees are an easy one. They're inexpensive, you can start tomorrow, there's low ongoing maintenance of them, and they would rate high on the impact of clean water, clean air, and helping with the climate and the temperatures. The electric fleet vehicles would take a greater investment, longer term, to find the financing for it, and may not be acceptable at the moment to implement.
Thank you, Kenny.
To take a look at that, to take a look at this question, I went back and read the neighborhood survey from 2021, and about 80 to 90% of the people surveyed felt that there were about four major issues that really were a concern to them. The number one issue was crime. The number two issue was, hang on a second. Housing. Number three was neighborhood appearance, number four was jobs, okay? So I looked at the survey, I've read it again and again, no place on there to define anything about climate change. So remember I mentioned before about the need to have and the nice to have? The need to have is the things that the citizens are concerned about. The nice to have is, once we got that done, then we can look at climate change, which is probably not going to affect us for another 200 or 300 years.
We will now go to closing statements, and we're back to Curtis.
Well, safety, controlling development, expanding recreation, fighting for the front lives of our city, expanding our airport, implementing the Lake Wales Connected Plan, preserving our historic buildings, maintaining our vintage charm, listening to you, and getting the job done is my agenda. Experience counts, and I say it all day, just like when I was your city commissioner for four years. I will be unwalked and unlost. The mayor's office will always be open for you and to you, the people, because it is your office, and your city staff will be available to hear and address your concerns. Running for office is easy, governing is hard. Let's elect a mayor who will be ready on day one to work for you and your interests, not the other way around. We can do this together. Together on April 5th, vote Curtis Gibson for Lake Wales Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Hi, I have to tell you, I don't think running for office is easy. You've heard us talk about, like I said, that the issues are the same, folks, all of us are saying pretty much the same things. Locally controlled growth, investing in both of our historic downtown areas, citizen education is a big deal, and that's something I would love to give my attention to because I feel like it would, you know, when we talk about maybe increasing divisiveness, that would take care of a lot of it, because I think we all believe the best about one another for the most part, and fiscal responsibility. In fact, I, I would take that I think all of us, any of us, would probably try and do our best. I think we all would try and serve this city well, I believe that about everyone that's on this stage. So the question for you is just who you believe is the most effective leader to make that happen, and I feel like I have a record of being able to build, to get people to want to be a part of changing the environment, so that's why I would ask for your vote.
Kenny?
As Jack just said, we all have a very similar platform, and that is financial sustainability, strategic growth. I have over 20 years of building teams, creating visions, and implementing plans for success. I also have a love and a passion for this city, as my husband and I have currently invested. With your vote, with your support, we can make Lake Wales a better place to live and retain our small-town values. Thank you.
Looking up where I looked off before, I will work hard for all the people. I'm going to be a good steward of your tax dollars. As the commission spends money, I'll look at it as if it was my own, although it's not. I want to involve the community by asking questions and listening, and I've taught communication skills, and listening is the number one communication skill. So anybody that has a concern or has a question is free to contact me anytime. You may not always agree with the decision I make, but I will always tell you the rationale and the reasoning behind that decision. As we look to the future we want for our community, not what seems by default to be inevitable, we have a chance to shape Lake Wales the way we want to, but we need to work together, and that means everybody gets involved, everybody gets to say something and have a, have a position. Keep Lake Wales safe, and we'll make it more prosperous for everyone.
It's a bit of a risky answer, but I'm going to be honest, I'm just going to be honest. Up here, listening to a couple of answers that I heard, it reminded me of, reminded me of why I'm really here. It reminded me, it reminded, a couple of things were said, it was kind of coded to me. It reminded me of, of, of why I need to be here. It reminded me, I really don't want to say anything, but, but there's something I want to say and I'm doing. It, it reminded me why we need to understand how to pass the torch. It reminded me why there, there comes a time when we have to move forward. We can't hold on to the past, and we can't want to live in the past. We've got to understand that there's a future, and we've got to understand that there's certain things that we do to deny that future and prevent that future from being the best it can be. And there's some of the things that stand up here, I don't know if everybody caught it, but trust me, I caught it. There's a couple of things were said, I just, well, we kind of went the wrong way. But I understand there are people in this city, there's people that are on this commission that really want to see this city moving in the right way, there are people that are there that have experience, that come from places, to understand how to grow. We're going to grow, we're going to be different, we're not going to be orange-grows.
I just, before we open to the audience, I, I just want to say, the purpose of this forum was to give all of you an opportunity to get to know the candidates and where they stand on issues better, especially the issues that mean a lot to you as a voter. I am going to augment the questions I will ask. You try to keep your questions general enough that all the candidates will have an opportunity to answer them. Remember, we're here to find out more about everybody. It's not a time for personal insults, so got your questions, please. And remember, everybody up here is stepping up to serve this community. They deserve both our appreciation and our respect. Can you come down and respond here if you have a question?
My question goes to, what are your thoughts and views on the current status of public transportation within the city, and what do you see as a need to move forward with expanding that or changing that, or how, how do you feel about public transportation within the city?
Thank you. I have one minute. We can start with first.
Thank you so much for that question. Right now, the city has already implemented some sort of plan with transportation, with Cypress, Cypress Connection. In fact, we just extended that, just when I got off the commission, we extended that connection that actually hit downtown, and they actually go all the way up to the mall. However, we need to do more, I, I really believe we do, and I believe the city is doing a great job, and we recognizing that, and they would do whatever they need to do to making sure that the people need transportation, whether it's to work, school, or whatever.
I really don't think I can add an awful lot to that. The only thing I would say is that we need to communicate it better, if we could have some strategy to make people aware. Frankly, I wasn't aware of it until I began to serve on the commission and then was appointed to the Polk Transportation Board, and which, we're not even transit systems a part of that, and found out how much is.
that, and found out how much is really available that our citizens are not aware of right now. So, communication, I think, is the biggest issue right now. Down the road, we'll have to look at some other things, but right now, that's the most immediate answer.
Hi, thank you for the question. I do support public transportation, and it falls under the mobility of a livable community. So, the ease of being able to get around enhances the livability of our community. I think to determine, very similar to what the conservation question was, I think we need to look at the impact and the need and the feasibility and the cost to the community. Thank you.
I haven't really studied the issues, so relative insurance ignorance, I'll just pass for now.
Do you have anyone else?
My wife and I live in Carlsburg State, which is on Challey Suzanne Road, a very dangerous stretch of road where multiple people have died, cars have run into trees, our fence, into our homes. The current administration doesn't seem to take this seriously, because we've been to multiple meetings. They're starting to pour concrete across the street for three hundred and fifty-plus homes. I just returned from cruising, found out there's another project now that's running through the pipeline immediately to the west of us. If elected, what will you do to work with the county to improve and make that road safer?
First, I'd like to say I agree with you, that's a very dangerous spot, and there's a lot of accidents that do happen there. As far as, I beat us county road, if I'm not mistaken, so I'm sure there would have to be some type of partnership between the city and the county, but I agree with you. I have to learn more to understand what can possibly be done, but on my way home, I don't know how many accidents or wrecks I've seen in that corner, so as soon as I learn something, I'll definitely let you know.
Do you have any comments?
Well, the county really has responsibility for those roads. We, as commissioners and mayor in Lake Wells, may have the opportunity to influence them. I know, and I've talked to most of the county commissioners, so I can pick up the phone, call them, and say, "Look, we got a problem here, you need to get out of it." What they will do is go back and say, "We've looked at the concurrent studies and the peak traffic, the peak hour, and it hasn't reached that trigger point yet where we're going to actually have to fix that road." So, there are those things to consider, and I'm sure we can negotiate something, but what will help a lot is if a whole bunch of you folks attend the county commissioner meetings, and let them know what you think, and come to the city commissioner meetings, and let us know what you think. That makes a big difference.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm supposed to do this, but anyway, that hill, I'm just thinking about it, it's that hill, I think some people aren't familiar with that area, maybe there could be something to put before they get to that hill, kind of like the note doesn't stop, really, like coming ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
This is where a good mayor will be an advocate for the community and develop strong partnerships with the county. It may be true that there may not signify enough traffic on the road to warrant further improvements, but I think a mayor that can convince one life lost is concerned and should be addressed and elevated up higher in the ring.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that it is a county road, and it's a very involved process. In the time I've served on the Transportation Planning Board, it's a frustrating process, frankly. We're looking for money from FDOT to come our direction. I will tell you that they just green-lighted the expansion of Thompson Nursery Road, starting winter even, a movement towards Highway 27, it's a $200 million project, but we're on the other side. That's my district, so believe me, I live with that. But, yeah, I think that you have to have a mayor that's able to build consensus, able to build relationships. One of the things I think we need to do is start working more proactively with our legal cities and get the municipalities to work together to address our county commissions. I was just on the phone with one of our county commissioners today, talking about that road, and what Danny said is true, it's about advocacy, and I think it's about building better cooperative relationships with the seventeen other municipalities in Polk County.
Thank you.
This question came up a whole lot, and when I was on the city commission, you know, I stressed that the city asked the county to possibly take over the county road, if they're not trying to help in the capacity of expanding that road, putting more lives out there, or even putting sidewalks, because more residents are being dealt on that road, and more people walk. I see people walking every day just to go to the mall, and, you know, the road, they're on the curve, so it's not good, and we recognize that. However, it takes you, the mayor, the commissioners, everybody to advocate at the county level. Matter of fact, Rick Wilson is our county commissioner for our district, so I would encourage you to call him as well, so that they can actually know about that road and what needs to be done from a county level. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to leave one of the questions that were put in on the cards, and I'll ask whoever wants to answer first, just pipe up and follow rotation, okay? It says, the main street speaker today said, "People want to see people downtown. A good source of people is hotels and apartments. What do you see as the role of city government in getting boarded-up hotels and apartments downtown open?" Who would like to start? Shannon? How about you, Dan?
Yeah, I really don't want to, but I will anyway. That hotel's been a problem for what, thirteen, fourteen years now? More than that, forty years? Okay. I'm only becoming aware of it recently, since I've been attending the city commission meetings, but if somebody comes up with a good creative idea for utilizing that, it's almost like a landmark right now, for that hotel, they should be encouraged to do that. Now, there was someone that was trying to do that and didn't get it done. We really should not lose that if we don't have to, but it's going to have to be something very creative, something useful, something that the city can use, and it's going to be one of those need-to-haves, not a nice-to-have.
Dennis, did you want to comment?
Just about the hotel, about downtown life.
I was talking about the hotel and apartments that are boarded up downtown. What's the city's responsibility in that?
Like I said, I think we're in the process of, we're saying about the lawsuit, now everything, I think we should try to work out, get the bill, get back, I would love to see us get back control of the building and actually make the building become a productive place. I think it's possible. I mean, I think that is an area, so, you know, let's fix it up, let's, you know, regain control of the hotel.
Thank you. Curtis, would you like to comment?
Well, it's been a problem for a long time. I know that that's been, I know that that's been looked at, I know that business people have looked at it, and it's probably not a winner as a business prospect, at least not on the front end. So, what's going to have to happen is, we're going to have to have people who love the city of Lake Wells be inspired to make an investment in that hotel. We're going to have to, as citizens, take ownership of that, that's my personal opinion. You're going to have to have someone who's able to find people who have resources that love the city that want to make an investment in that hotel, because it's been looked at. It's not enough to say that the city should have worked better with the owner that was there, the city's been very patient with the owner that is there, and if you do that, you're convicting years worth of people that have sat on commission while that hotel has had nothing done with it. So, I think we have to look at a public-private partnership with some people of means who love the city of Lake Wells.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
I think there's a lot that the commission and the mayor can do for these, creating residents downtown life and restore the hotel. A lot of brand-new hotels are looking for boutique hotels to add to their portfolio, and they are investing in small towns in their hotels. Yes, the city may have to put a little into it, but that goes back to the livability of the city. Businesses, industries will move to the city if they can see that the city believes in itself, and that might be, we have to add something to the hotel to get it off the ground. It has been a struggle for twenty years, and the nice thing is, is people have gotten so frustrated, not the nice thing that people are frustrated, but they have, they're under the impression that there's nothing we can do, it'll never happen. When you have somebody new come in that loves it, you can make it happen.
Thank you.
Number one, to get that done, we need to continue the Lake Wells Connected Plan that Dover Cold presented to us and we adopted. That will actually do a whole lot, meaning more people will be more invested in the downtown area, the hotel, the divided areas, to put their money in, as some people say, where your mouth is. However, I will say, unfortunately, with the Grand Hotel, Will's built, you know, right now, the city is under litigation with the owner, you know, so that may take a lengthy time or some sort of process before we see anything done with it. So, I would just say that, but the Dover Cold Plan, I like it.
Do you have any? Do you have a question for the audience?
My name is Susan Yoma, I'm a retired teacher of forty years, and I'm trying to stay out of jail, and I'm going to tell you why. I live across the street from Baca Academy North, fantastic, fantastic school, no problem with the school at all, but try to imagine this scenario. Here's the school, here, here is the roadway, here's my driveway, here's my driveway, here's the clinic, okay? The clinic is here, my driveway is here, I drive back out, and who's there? A car. Who's here? A car. I cannot get out of my driveway. Am I allowed to put condoms in the driveway to protect my space? I don't need to, I'm thirty hundred years old now. I need to go tomorrow morning.
Don't go to prison. And I'm a little nervous that we're all in the clinic up here. I might first, we're seeing this not only there, but Janie Howard Wilson's had a lot of problems with trying to manage the traffic around the schools, and the best, the best, most immediate thing that you can do is share that need with the city staff, and that will be shared with the police department.
What I'm doing that is talking up to the construction workers and saying, "Darling, we need to move your trucks." And I don't get it.
Just remember, you're trying not to go to jail. I would always say the first step is to try and talk to our city staff, and just let me say this, it's a shame it was blocked, but we've got a great staff, and they're usually very responsive to those sort of things, so I would start to talk to the city manager and see what can be done immediately.
The school is that important, I have to say that, but they don't always know the truth.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I have to stop.
I would agree. You know, back in the old days, kids used to walk to neighborhood schools, so you didn't have the car traffic that you currently have, and today, we take our kids to school, and so every neighborhood surrounded by a school is facing this problem, probably not to the same degree that you are, because you're right there and the traffic's being blocked. But I do agree with Jack that communication with the city staff and the schools themselves can help go a long way. Coming up with a pickup-drop-off pattern that doesn't aim to menace the neighbors around it.
Thank you.
I would say don't give up, because on Seventeen, there was, at Janie Howard Wilson, there was years of traffic problems, and I recently saw that a citizen complained, they went to the commissioner, the commissioner got with the city manager, the city manager got with the police department, and by the time I arrived by now, it looks like it was a solution, it was something that was solved. So, I think if you really talk to the right people, I believe that would, I believe that happened now.
Anyone else?
Have you talked to the school?
I have, they're on speed dial. I have construction on the semi-trucks that have to move, because I can't get out to get to the doctor's apartment, that's a long way to go, and they're very nice, but I get constructions and many tasks.
Yeah, if you can.
If it comes in streets of block, that's all I want to know, about being in trouble.
If you can deal with them directly and get it solved that way, that would be the best thing, rather than going, you know, as a last resort, you're going to go to the commission, and you're going to the city staff or whatever, but, you know, most people understand, and they're pretty nice, if you just tell them the problem, and keep telling them the problem, and keep telling them the problem, eventually you can wear a crown.
My question is kind of a two-fold. One is, I am not sure if there is actually a professional grant writer for the city of Lake Wells, not someone who does it part-time, but someone who does it as a professional level, knows how to be able to get grants from all over America, government. So, that's part of my question, if there is, it would be nice to know that on the website or something, I've not been able to find that out. If not, what would you all be interested on that? The second question is, is as far as being able to find out about information, I know that there is a website that does have the government, but a lot of times, when I'm finding things out on social media, it is the day that it has already happened or the day after. I would love to be able to go to these commission meetings and know, but I will tell you, I most of the time do not know when it is, if it is out there. Please tell us what exactly the website is and where we need to go so we can show up. Okay, somebody like to address that?
Yeah, I'd definitely like to address that. Thank you so much for your question. As far as grant writing, you know, the expertise at the city level and their staff, they are, you know, they have the education or the backing, and if they don't have it, they're supposed to be able to reach out to people that could possibly help, you know, getting services within the community, the city, so that we can get those grants. So, partnerships. And as far as marketing, yes, we do need, I agree with you, we do need to get more information out so that more people can participate when it comes to city vehicles, coming to community engagements. In fact, if you go to Curtis Gibson LW, it's a Facebook page, I put out a lot of information, so if you follow me, you'll get more information about what's going on in our community. Thank you.
Anybody else want to respond?
I don't know if we have a full-time grant writer, I just, our city has received several grants in the last few years, we just received a great grant to have the fuel capacities of the airport expanded, Michael Bennett just got some grant via Tree City, so I'm not sure how that's handled, so I'm not sure if we have a full-time grant writer, or if the people that run the different departments are just proficient at doing that. As far as city commission meetings go, they happen on the same day every month, I think it's the second, fourth, Tuesday of every month, so if you just mark those days down, that's when it happens.
Second, third.
Second, third, okay.
Six o'clock.
First and third, there you go. I promise I have it on my calendar, and despite what you've read recently, I'm there most of the time.
Did anybody else want to comment?
Just sort of the first thing. Yeah, first and third, and the agenda is always published, so you know it's on the agenda, and you know when things are going to be coming up. I don't know about the grant writing process, I've looked at the budget, so as Janice said, I know that we've received grants. In a past life, I was a fundraiser for Lutheran High School in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, I've written grants, so I will take a look at that.
I'm going to address the communication about the events and different meetings that are held. It is sometimes difficult to find what you're looking for and the different things that are involved, but I think that's where the communications and marketing manager can help improve that, that gap between all the things the city is doing and, you know, letting the community know so that we can be more involved and we can, you know, become more invested in our community, because you can tell right here that this is a great sign that we do care about it.
Okay, why don't we, um, do you have a question?
Can you hear me? Can you just sound like?
Good evening to the panel, good evening to everyone here this evening. My name is De, I am from Chicago, I'm the CEO of the Guiding Light Ministry. I've been here in Lake Wells for about two months now. The Guiding Light Ministry illuminates the light from dark places, we empower our seniors and we elevate ours. I walked a grandson, he's a Laker, right, they're from Virginia, and I walked him here, we, I went into the library here, there was nothing in there for African-American history, and I asked the library, "Why?", and she says, "She don't know." I said, "You don't know? I mean, don't our African-American children come into this library?", and I'm quite sure we have all ethnic that come into that library, and they haven't had nothing done. And I, I'm opposed to the panel right now, what, I, I still there's a racial barrier, I'm from Chicago, you know, and I know when I feel racist, you know, and I didn't get a clear-cut answer to "why?", you know, and I, I wanna know, I spun around, I looked at me, I said, "Grandma, am I not unfortunate?", I said, "Yes, you are." So I don't know what you can do about it, she said, "Will you do so?"
Okay, and, you know, I have her question in writing, and what she didn't say was that that was during Black History Month.
Yes.
At the Rendell Books Center.
I, I, I'd like to address that, that question for you. I think us, in, in this community, us as African-Americans, we need, we need to do a better job of making sure those things are there and taken care of. So I'm, I'm not gonna say anything about racism or anything, I'm gonna say, myself, I think people that live around me, people like, we need to do more, we need to do, make sure, we need to do more to make sure that that's available for those kids so they can understand. So I, I'll say to you, now, don't look at nobody else, look at me, look at Mr. Gibson, look at everybody that lives here that look like us, 'cause we need to do a better job. And I'll say this for y'all, so, I think now's the time, 'cause the, the kids, the people that I went to school with, it's different, I, I promise you, it's different. When I talk about the police chief, when I talk about the fire chief, I know it's different, I'm not just saying that. I'm saying that because I went to school with these people, and we wanted better, we wanted different, we knew what grew around, we knew where we came from, we knew what was going on, we understood it, and we knew we had to go back to separate places, but at the same time, we wanted to be next to each other, we wanted to be apart, we wanted to be with each other, and we understood that there was a way to do that, and we understood that in time it would happen. And what I'm saying, now is that time. So to answer your question, put that on, ask me that question in time to think about.
Thanks, Janie, thank you.
I have a book of my own, written by Kate Crowe Smith, entitled Frederick Douglass. The principles and values that I mentioned before are the same ones that Frederick Douglass lives by, and so I will donate that book to the, to the library.
Anybody else?
I say something, thank you, thank you so much for your question. I would definitely say the Lake Wells Depot Museum, you know, they do have a lot of history. Right now, I know they just transitioned where the city has not taken ownership of it now, it's been reverted back to an organization which I'm pretty sure they will do a great job of showing all the history of Lake Wells. In fact, I just want to give a shout-out to my wife, Danielle, Danielle Gibson, she actually put on an event not too long ago, where in Black History, we always, you know, talk about Martin Luther King, et cetera, she threw up an event to actually talk about those here in Lake Wells, and learning the history about our Black resident citizens right here in this community, and I thought it was a great event, and actually it's on live stream, it's still in the social media, so if you wanna kind of look at that, there's some great speakers, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Man, you said you, you moved here a couple months ago from Chicago?
Yeah.
I, I would, I would say give, give Lake Wells a chance on that issue, I, I, it probably was an unfortunate oversight, shouldn't have happened in February, well, I, I would, I would credit it to a poor choice, and, and just like Curtis was sharing, there are a lot of things that do happen here, so it's hard to, it's hard to accuse the city of racism in two months, so take a look around, and, and then I would say that what you did here was important, make the library aware of that oversight, and hopefully it won't happen again.
I would say, I do have a question I would like to read, it's asking, "How do you plan to work with and represent the members of the community with opinions that differ from yours?" We'd like to start, Karen?
I, I think speaking and working with individuals that have a completely different opinion, agenda, that is something I have dealt with for my entire career. If I look lately at working with the scientists and what, in, in WWF, they, rightfully so, have a passion for science, for science base. Me being responsible for the money and the finances, well, no, we're gonna have to check on a few items, so I'm, quite often, and what I find is that it's communication, it is building a relationship, and it is finding that common ground in which you can both start to build upon, and, and usually the results become much better with someone that you have a different opinion with, because you come up with solutions that have a broader impact.
Thank you.
I think the question probably had to do with cultural relations, if I'm not mistaken? Yes?
No, it had, it had to do with working with people and representing people with a different ideas and backgrounds.
Yeah, that would kind of be cultural relations. As I mentioned, as part of my principles and, and values, there's only two kinds of people. There are sinners that are saved, and sinners that are not saved, and as long as I view people that way, I take a very charitable approach toward them, I take a very, make an effort to try and understand where those people are coming from, so that by some means, I might be able to share with them what's really, really important. So i, i, if we look at people that are really different from ourselves, and we really look at them carefully, we find out they're not that different at all.
Then you should pay attention to our answers. If this is not cultural, when we talk about differences, I mean, it can be, do we wanna paint the sign blue, or do we wanna paint the sign red? I mean, it, it's just about can you respect the other person's opinion and how you approach it? It's not, it's not always gotta be an underlying cultural disagreement, I mean, it doesn't have to be that. I, I hope everybody kind of understands that agreeing, working with someone you disagree with doesn't automatically, because I see you, I can understand we're different. We can talk and have differences, and once we discover what our differences are, we can discuss what our differences are, and at that point, it becomes about do we really want a solution, or we just arguing to argue, or we just trying to prove our point? 'Cause I'm married, so I have to say, "Yes, dear." So I, I understand, compromise, I understand, but, but there's something about the people, I think we should all be giving honest effort, not just coming to it with our agenda, 'cause sometimes our agenda is wrong. Sometimes, sometimes what we believe is wrong, even though we've been believing it a long time, it still can be wrong.
No, and whoever wrote that question, thank you, it's a very important question, and I just want you to know, me as, as a person, as, as an elected official, in fact, I see some faces in here where I, I know I had called here and asked you questions, I, I will never shy away from speaking to anybody that may not agree with me, and that's okay, we may agree to disagree, and that's fine, but we are coming somewhere to have a common ground, and that's what I think is all, the process, that's what it's all about, working together, and we have to sit at the table and work together.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I think that's, that's the art of politics, isn't it? Just learn how to work with people who disagree, that's what a city's about, and so you go into it expecting that you're gonna disagree with people, and you just believe you have the skills to work it out together, that's what being a part of the community is all about.
Thank you. Austin? Do you have a question from the audience?
Thank you. I'll try to be as respectful as I can in that question, but I'd like to respond a little bit to what this fine lady had to say. I work in healthcare, I work with all kinds of people from this community, I've done it for eighteen years, and I've seen people that are not in the best of moves, and sometimes their prejudices show through, and they say lots of these hateful things, some of whom highly offensive to me, but I work under a code of ethics. I'm expected to deliver professional service to each and every patient that comes in the hospital. I would like, like to see our city committed, commission show the same respect for the people of Lake Wells. We have all kinds of people who live in this community, and to see a city commissioner write an essay on the county citizens defending freedom website at length, essentially advocating for the removal of people in history from teachings.
I'm anxious on a new relationship.
And teachings. I would like to know how a city commissioner can reconcile who sets a code of community and is part of that description, would write such a thing and expect to create an atmosphere of working together, not of other places.
You know, is that this is something that I don't think can be answered in one minute?
No, it's not, it, it can't be answered in one minute. It's, it's simply, let's be, let's be honest about what we're trying to do, same thing I've been saying the whole time, let's be honest about what we're trying to do. Are we trying to, are we trying to pass down information, or are we trying to hide information? And we're trying to hide information, then your technique will indicate that you're trying to hide information. If you're trying to share information, your technique will indicate that you're trying to share information. It's simple.
Okay, well, again, I'd like to do, I'm sorry, to the back conversation, I'm not, after the, uh, for instance, I'm gonna.
I'm assuming he's pointing out one commissioner, since I'm the only one that's on CCD. Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I, I have to represent all of the citizens, and that includes the parents of children that go to these schools, and you, you really do have to look at the specifics. My contention there was the inappropriate access that was given to the student bodies by, to an activist group, a voluntary, free or nonprofit group, and they use school activities to have access to those children. That, if you read that, that's the contention, and also the fact, and also the fact that we expressed a concern about African-American history, but it was being, but another agenda was using African-American history to Trojan horse a different agenda at the end, which is happening often in our culture.
What agenda?
I would be happy to answer that question, it's Janie either wants to come talk to me about it, so.
Because it's, you talk to the mayor. Okay, I have a question here, it says, "How would balance the time requirements of being mayor, pressure, with your current, I'm sorry, employment demands and your outside involvement in other activities?" Would you like to start with that? Okay, thank you.
I just want to say my job is very supportive of me, I'm an insurance adjuster, and right now, you know, my time is, is, you know, being in any elected position, you sacrifice a lot of your time, because there's a lot of work that you have to do, and you have to make sure that you're on, you're, you're showing up to meetings, you're showing up to events as this, talking to people, your phone is non-stop, you know, ringing, and you need to answer it. So I have been, you know, had the greatest pleasure to making sure that I have been available as a city commissioner and beyond, to answer people's calls, to show up to meetings, show up to events, and I have no, no, really, no, um, influence, no, conflicts with my schedule to actually be able to show up as a mayor, so.
Yes.
Although, like, I have a microphone ready, excuse me. I'm retired, so, you know, I've got some time. About the only other thing I do be saying is go to the meetings and the commissions and the school board, is sing. And I've got three other guys that sing with me, and we get together whenever we can, but all another time that I have, I used to read, and I will continue to read a little bit, but I have time to spend on the issues that need to be dealt with in Lake Wells. Since we've been here, we've learned to love this little city, and we wanna do what we can to, to be involved, to be active, and to really get others involved and active as well.
Well, I am currently employed with WWF remotely, but I've already discussed with them that I would reduce my hours from full-time to ten hours a week and still provide the strategic advice on a couple of different key points. I think the mayor's role is a full-time job, and it is seven days a week, twenty-four-seven, and I have the full support of my husband, which usually is out of town two weeks, out of a month, so I'm perfectly available. And because of the time difference with WWF, and my day's starting usually at five o'clock, I'm showered and ready to go by nine.
Well, it actually kind of falls in perfectly in line with my life. All, first part of my life, directly dealing with kids, whether that's little league sports or whether that's, um, parenting, teaching parenting classes, or whatever, directly. Now, my youngest son is graduating from high school this year, so he, he was a basketball, he plays basketball, so that was number one priority in my life, so whatever my kids were doing was always my number one priority. So this would not have been important to me at all a year ago, I'll be honest with you, it wouldn't have been important to me at all. But now, timing, this gives me a perfect opportunity, it fits perfectly in my life, gives me an opportunity to learn more about what's going on in the city, gives me a turn of opportunity to learn from people that know, so, no, this is, this is number one that I sign my line, but yes, it is.
I, I think that I probably considered that a lot before I accepted the appointment to the city commission, and I'm learning it's, it's about time management, and it's doable, I found out that it's doable, so I don't, I don't have a lot of worries about that.
Okay. Does anybody have a question?
Good evening, everybody, how are you doing? This is where everybody look for, I'm also from Chicago, I'm also the owner of Will's Point. I've been here for four and a half years, and I've noticed a big racial gap in the city of Lake Wells. I've been here, I was actually approached by two gentlemen over the weekend about how I bring together different identities and bringing more diversity into the city, and they were very, very, very excited about what I was doing. I'm actually overwhelmed by it, but as a resident here, I would like to know, for you all that are running our office, what would you do to bring the community together instead of us being fighting? Because that's all I see right now.
Thank you. Who would like this person?
I'll, I'll start and go quickly. In the, in the book to the Galatians that follows us, he says, "There is no longer slave or free, there's no longer Jew and Greek, there's no longer male and female," and I will add, "there's no longer black and white, there's no longer rich and poor, we are all one in Christ." Now, if you think about it, if you look at me, I'm not white. I've been in Florida for about eight years, I'm tan. If you look at the lady that just spoke, she's not black, she's a darker shade of tan than I am. If that's the way I view things, and if that's the way I view people, that makes a lot of the animosity go away. We are all in this together, and that's the main point, so we need to start acting like it. A lot of what can be done can start in the churches, the pastors have to let their people know that we are all in this together.
No, that, that, that sounds good, that sound, that, that, that sounds good, I'll, because it sounded good, but it's not true, and we know that's not true in America, so let's be honest. So let's be honest about it. I keep saying the first thing we have to do is be honest about what we're trying to do. And if we want to mislead, people will say nice things that everybody needs to be able to feel it happen. And the same thing is going to happen next week. So until we decide to be honest about what's going on, address the issues, face the issue, be honest about what we can come up as solutions, be honest about what we accept. We talked about downtown, downtown not like Lake Wales. Let's be honest about it. I think we should have two sections of Lake Wales. I think we should have downtown Lake Wales for the seniors because I think that's a great place for them to go and hang out. Now, I also think we should have another place on another side of town for the younger people, the medium-aged in Lake Wales who's 38 years old. So how do we bring people together? Do you not understand who listens, who buys music? One group of people make music, another group buys it. That means they're already getting along. The only problem is the misconception and the deceit that's in front of us. So once we decide to stop playing games, to be honest, we can fix this. See, I know the people that I live in school with are ready for this. It's a matter of leadership ready to help us do it.
Thank you.
Hi. My husband and I had the good fortune to live abroad and it was a community that only 10% of the population were locals. The rest of the 90% were from people from all over the world, different religions, different languages, different cultures. And yet, it worked. We were all able to live side by side. Our children went to school together. We attended religious services together and I know it can work here. The Lake Wales Connected Plan is a start. There's a reason that word "connected" was chosen. So if we start having some uncomfortable conversations and we start building relationships, we can repair those bridges and we can come together as one community.
To me, if I'm in America, with every conversation, I think I just always begin at believing the best about the person that's standing in front of me and try not to lead with accusations, just try and say, "Talk to him." Maybe I missed something, maybe I misunderstood something. And I think if we can have those kind of conversations, facilitate those kind of conversations, we can get, we can work together on things. So, I mean, there's an awful lot of hurt, there's a lot of history and emotion that comes into any conversation that we have about these issues. So all I can do is look at the person that's sitting in front of me, the people that are in front of me, and believe the best about them and try and listen very carefully to what they're saying. Obviously, you know, that's the only thing I can say about that.
Thank you. Curtis?
The only thing I would say to this question, and I appreciate it, is it starts at home. Period. You know, having conversations with your kids and everything like that. I know right now, two of my kids are mixed race, Caucasian and black. I have conversations with them because people ask questions, why you don't look like me or whatever the case may be. So those kind of questions, you know, need to be answered and not hide from it. We have to have those uncomfortable conversations with many people. And me, I speak to a lot of people. I don't care what side of town we go on. I don't care if it's in the country. You better believe I'm going to sit down and eat with you. I'm going to sit down and talk with you. And I'm not going to be afraid to do so. And we shouldn't be afraid to learn other people's history. It's not, you should not be afraid. You should welcome that and we can learn from one another.
Thank you. Question I'm going to read from the audience. Question is, what have you done or will you do to raise the standard of living for the lowest incomes?
Part of the CRA now. I mean, you look at the Northwest community, they got the poor homes down there. I mean, I think eventually if you continue that process, you increase the value of the neighborhood and you continue to increase the value of the wealth of the people in that neighborhood. So I think if we continue to do that and work that plan and kind of find ways to invest in the homes that's already there, rebuild them or fix them up, I think if we just continue, that's how you increase the value of the homes and increase the neighborhood, the value of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
At Lake Wales, we have the lowest per capita home value in the county. We have the lowest per capita average income in the county. As a commission, as a community, we need to look at how can we attract good-paying jobs, industry, business to Lake Wales. And it starts with making Lake Wales a very inviting and comfortable place to come and live. People don't, you know, move to a place anymore because there's a good job and they move because it's a nice place to live and then they try to find a job. So we've got to make sure that we're looking forward to how can we acquire some good-paying jobs that was going to raise everybody in the whole city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Curtis?
Yes, thank you. Can you just repeat the question?
Sure. What have you done or will you do to raise the standard of living for the lowest incomes?
Okay, thank you. So right now, the city is doing a great job in the CRA department, actually trying to, you know, put affordable housing in areas that are blighted right now. I think if you give people intergenerational wealth, that will help them get to a plain level field. And that's important. And I think the city is doing a really great job, you know, raising the property values when we actually do certain things in areas, you know, the Dover Code, that's going to enhance property values. So it's very important that we continue that process, continue that plan. And I'm pretty sure that there will be a total difference in our community all around.
Thank you. Anyone else? Karen?
I don't think I'm saying anything new, but one way to increase the standard of living at the very beginning, and it's a long-term goal, is by education. It's also about creating environments where individuals that may not go on to a higher education or advanced degree but learns the skills, the traits that seem to be going away, which are very profitable and needed. There's also the Connected Plan, which will invite investment into town, which will raise the property values. We also have the minimum wage increase by the state. So that will start to affect us. Where we need to manage that piece is managing the cost of the living increasing and not continue to price people out.
Thank you. Austin? Do you have a question from the audience?
My name's Howard K. and I moved to Lake Wales in 1983, so I've been here, I guess, 40 years. Spent many, many, many hours voting to Lake Wales organizations and everything. I know every person up on that board, I can say very well, except for Mr. Kruger. And I'd like to ask you a question, Mr. Kruger. I'm Jewish. I've moved up here and I've been here for 30 years, 40 years. I've never had a problem, I've been accepted by everybody. I learned tonight that there's only two kinds of people. One, there's people who are sinners, that have been saved, and some who are sinners who haven't been saved. I assume I fall into your category of a sinner who has not been saved. So are you going to treat me differently today?
I will treat you no different today. I will pray you on my perilous and I will pray for you. And I will let you know that when I say that, I say that with the most charity in my heart because it's not what I'm saying. It's that those are not my words. Those are the words in the Bible. And so if somebody has a problem with, you know, there's one way, one truth and one life and that's Jesus Christ, you got to take that up with God. Because I didn't say that, he did.
There's another question I've been asked to ask if I get this right. As far as, there's several candidates up there running for one office at least. And so do you all believe in a plurality versus a majority? And if there's a, you know, if it comes up as an issue, would you want to run off?
What does our charter say right now? Okay, Mike said, let's just stick with that.
Anybody else have any comment or opinion? Okay, one last question. Why do you think Winter Haven was able to rebuild their downtown while Lake Wales remains dead?
I think a huge key to Winter Haven was the 610 Corporation. And what you had there was a bunch of business people who decided to invest in downtown and they had a long-term investing strategy. They weren't looking to get rich quick because they were local business people who cared about their city. So that's kind of what I was alluding to earlier is if a city can find those kind of people who have the means and the expertise and the passion for the local community, that's going to be more powerful than any, anything that the commission can do internationally. Government assists in the answer, government's not the answer.
Anyone else want to leave the comment?
I think part of it may also be the way Winter Haven is set up. You got more traffic coming through downtown through their areas. If you look at like Lincoln Avenue, I would love to see Lincoln Avenue come back one day and be a thriving area, but honestly, I think it's going to be difficult because it doesn't connect all the way up to 27 and the two roads don't connect. So I think we have to come up with other ways to kind of make a bow down in that area. I hear there's a plan to maybe have Watts to connect all the way up. I think that those are different ways to kind of help that area to kind of grow. Design, part of it was design. I mean, Winter Haven's in a better situation, more traffic coming through to spend money. I mean, you know.
I think the 610 group in Winter Haven represents that local organic growth. And people, I believe in our community, will start doing that and you're already seeing the beginnings of it now. But I think to keep the momentum going, you need further development in partnership with the city. And that will then attract the outside investors to invest in our city because I don't, I'm not completely sure that local organic growth alone for downtown would be the answer. I think we do want to attract the outside investors.
Thank you. Curtis, would you like to?
I'm big on looking at other cities and what they have done because we don't need to reinvent the wheel. If the wheel is already growing, we can use their ideas to help our city thrive. In fact, we have. We got one of the best main streets in the nation. In fact, Karen Thompson, she came from Winter Haven. So the city has recognized that we were a little behind, but we're catching up and we're on track doing everything that's possible and necessary. We're getting people to invest in downtown. We're getting not only people to invest, the city is investing. The city just took out $18.5 million bond, you know, to redo this Dover Code plan. That's important. And we just got to make sure we see that through completion.
Do you want the mic, Ken?
I'll say it back.
Okay, okay.
One quick clarification, and we do have a commissioner. It's the CRA that will be taking out the loan and the bond, correct?
Right.
Okay, so it won't be the city that's indebted, it will be the CRA, which in turn will have funding from the development and the increase in property taxes that will help go toward paying off that loan. It won't be the citizens of Lake Wales paying off that loan.
Okay. I think we're going to wrap it up now. I would really like to thank our captainage for coming tonight. Very brave. I want to thank all of you for doing the community business here and learning to sit hard, so it will be more important to them to do it. Thank you.